It's not in my calendar anymore.
What number is Finance? What number is Finance?
Excited on the agenda is Finance Department, it's listed as a number eight in your budget book.
Good morning, Leslie, how are you?
Good morning, thank you.
Just state your name since we're recording.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Leslie Lewis, Director of Finance.
If you would just give us an overview of...
Oh, of my budget, yes. Basically, my budget is flat to last year or under. In my budget, we have to budget the real estate, the personal property tax, the local income tax, bad check charges, and the total revenue this year projected for local income tax is 55 million. Ordinary business corporate tax is 4.9 million, giving us a total local income tax of 63,563,026 dollars. Would you like me to go over like expense, like the expenses?
Yeah. What is the salaries promotions?
Line item?
The second item under salaries, 11,820. The second item, 500011, salaries promotions, 11,820.
You probably need Ms. Anis to explain what the genesis of that is. I'm wondering if it isn't the call of the will.
And you're saying everything else is basically flat?
Correct. I pretty much start the budget at online item 520001 is my portion.
Leslie, unice training, everybody's current or up to date as far as training goes? Have we improved significantly from the past and it's being utilized more now than has been? All the departments are up to speed, I assume?
Leslie doesn't really oversee munis training. It's overseen by IT.
Oversight is done by that, but it's all merged in Finance.
I believe we could use munis more, and I'm trying to... The reason I kept this in the budget is to determine if we could bring training in-house. And I kind of like to talk to the software company and list out where I think we're weak. So when you bring a trainer in, that's their expertise. And then you can get a classroom full, we can all be trained where we could utilize the system more.
Rather than going to Texas or wherever.
Correct, correct. Because then it's your direct.
We have very few people going to Texas. Don Mitchell Parks in IT is very, very well-versed in munis and can fill most of the end-user training. The Texas Tyler Technologies event really isn't for end-users. So sending an end-user, end-user doesn't get much out of that. Having training for specific individuals who need more training on how they can better utilize munis for their jobs is really something that we do in-house and Don oversees it.
Overseeing, okay, thank you. Did you do the munis training, Steve?
Yes.
Did you do it in Texas?
Sorry.
Was it in Texas when you took the munis training?
This year was in San Antonio.
San Antonio?
Yes.
You got, I'm assuming that you, I mean, from discussions that we had, I thought that you had suggested it was very beneficial.
It was to me, yes.
In one of your notes here, I said where you wanted to do a reorganization and salary adjustments. Apparently you lost a couple employees and some other employees had taken the duties. And it says the adjustments, salary reorganization and salary adjustments were denied. Can you explain that, what you wanted to do?
Well, and I think every manager has different ways of setting up. And I guess it wasn't, appeared to be cost-effective this year to...
So what did you want to do as far as...
There were some people I thought, I was trying to more or less move people in their areas of expertise. Like I have some people that have been, and I feel very blessed for 40 years. So I was going to put them in charge of the areas they were most with experience and oversee some of the newer staff. I was trying to divide it up more in the accounting side, the revenue side, and then like the deets with the transfer taxes. So it would have been like three, under John Ellis, it would have been like three different new levels.
So you lost two positions. Are they going to be refilled at all or...
Not this, they weren't in the budget for this year.
This year? So was the budget cut to take them out or... You're not sure? Was the budget cut to take the two employees out?
No, the budget wasn't cut. This goes back to the discussion that we had yesterday. Piecemealing our compensation plan is just really not the right way to go about revising our salary schedules. The Singer study was done, I forget when, it's been in place...
Long, long time ago.
It's been in place for a very, very long time. And what's happened along the ways is that we've, for lack of any better term, we've tinkered with it. And I really don't think that's an appropriate way to go about salary administration. What we need is a comprehensive market review of our salary schedules by department, by position, to see if we need to mark to market. I don't like the idea of essentially picking winners and losers and saying, well, you know, this year we'll take this department because we have savings, we're going to give money to people in that department. I think we need to step back and say, what does that department need? What jobs are there and what are those jobs worth in the marketplace? And that's a comprehensive study that needs to take place.
So you do that with every department you add employees to? Or do you try to do that with, when they want more, I mean, do you do a study with that with every employee, every department that wants more employees, I guess that's what I'm saying?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Joe.
You just said you needed to do studies to see if these people were needed. Do you do that with every department?
We do that every year. What I'm saying is, is that the people inside, the county hasn't done a comprehensive salary review since the Singer study was introduced. And I think that that is probably long overdue and that we need to do that rather than department heads coming forward and saying, well, you know, I'm not going to fill this position. I want to take that money and I want to give it to these people. Well, if we're not going to fill the position, that begs the question, what should the departmental staffing look like? And if we're going to give money to other people inside that department, well, how does that relate to other people in like positions across the county? So we're doing it piecemeal, or that's a piecemeal approach. I don't think that's an appropriate approach. I think we should do a comprehensive salary study. I intuitively think that we are probably below market in some areas, not below market in other areas. But until we do a comprehensive study, we actually don't know. We really don't know, and I think that's the...
So I guess that should apply countywide, not just in the Finance Department?
Yes, sir.
So anytime, anytime, would that apply even to department heads or...
Yeah, I think the whole salary structure needs to be reviewed to see where we are in the marketplace.
So before...
Have we marked to market?
Before any raises or just suggesting that there should be a salary?
Okay, that's what I'm suggesting you do.
Alright, thank you.
I don't know how much it costs, but I think that it's long overdue.
I do think I have a great staff and I would hate to lose any of them.
Yeah, I understand. So which two positions are not currently filled?
Well, it was two deputies, and even if you didn't call that position a deputy, it would be nice to have that position because I really only feel like you need one deputy in a department.
Right.
And then when Rob, when the Chief Revenue Specialist reta... Oh, I'm sorry, when the Chief Revenue Specialist retired, that position was not filled.
But they're still, looks like they're still both funded in this budget, so they're...
No, I don't, I don't think they're funded.
No?
No, they're not funded in this budget. And the duties didn't go away. They had to be reassigned. So I was trying to reorganize and really give people the authority to, like, who took over the Chief Revenue Specialist to have that title so they would be a manager and these people would be responsible to report to them.
So there's still Revenue Specialist here, but you're saying there was a Chief Revenue Specialist as a position?
Correct.
And then there's still a Deputy Director of Finance, but...
The one, it used to be two.
I got you, okay.
But I do believe you only need one person to have that title. So if something would happen, you have someone automatically to step in place.
Right. Well, it says two positions have been removed, but it sounds like you want those two positions back in the budget.
Well, I mean, I work with the county anyway. If it's not feasible this year, we'll do the best job we can to get by.
Did you put in a formal request? For the budget? The budget, he just said it wasn't in there. That's why I did double checking.
But, I mean, I have a great, they've all picked up duties. I have a great staff. I mean, we're getting the work done, so...
Did you get an answer about that promotions thing?
What I would like is for Ms. Anis to provide us with a written explanation rather than be trying to...
What is it? She came up here, I thought she maybe...
It's for vacancies that will occur that will probably be what I would call underfilled where the incumbent is making more money than the position would be filled for because of the incumbent's seniority. So it's, the money, the money is in the budget, the money's in the budget based on the current occupant. But I'd like Michelle to explain it to you.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay. I find it really a bit troubling that the HR director is, has added monies into the budget of which the executive branch and the department head are completely unaware.
I wouldn't say that she's added money into the budget. It's the manner in which it's been entered into munis. But it's better for her to explain it than me because...
Well, it is an addition...
It gets technical.
I've got some questions.
Joe, go ahead.
This is general budget questions. We hear about all the funds, and I've always had these questions. We've got, correct me when I go to the wrong place here. Undesignated or unassigned fund balance, is that the same thing?
Yes.
That's the same thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have that. And is that also known as the prior-year fund balance? Or is that a different fund balance?
No, no, it's all one. And the chart of accounts were set up before my time. But if you go to the formal financial statements, it is only one undesignedated or, you know, fund balance that is, can be spent. It's not already appropriated for, or encumbered for a cause.
So those three statements are all the same?
Correct.
Okay. And we know what the general fund is. Got that? And then we've got a carry-forward fund, is that...
Carry-forward is pretty much the undesignedated fund balance.
So that's the same also?
Just prior year.
And, you know, we can do a job to try to clean up these account names so they're not as confusing.
Then you've got a rainy day fund.
It's really all the same.
It's all the same.
But these were set up before by Todd, but we can clean them up.
It was a rainy day.
I find it awkward, he's confused.
Yeah.
As we all are.
It is confusing.
Thank you for saying everybody's confused.
It does make it very confusing.
Now, the rainy day fund is stipulated. That's the, all this is...
Is it a different, is it a different figure?
All this is in the financial statements that you get from PKS.
Yeah, I know, I know. And it's all like John just said, you know, I'm just trying to nail this down.
Right.
So the rainy day fund is a different fund than the other funds.
Yeah, that's a segregated fund. And to utilize that fund, well, really utilizing any of the fund balance is that the, has to be endorsed by the executive and appropriated by the council. The rainy day fund is, and you'd have to go back, you'd have to research it, but it is stipulated what that is there for.
Okay.
It's basically an emergency fund.
Okay.
Be pretty serious if you got into the rainy day.
Yeah. Now, we've got what they call, I've got on here also reserves. So is all these the same as, this is all reserves?
They're all reserves.
They're all reserves, they're all reserve funds.
But some, you could see restricted reserves meaning it's already been encumbered for some use. Like we had some for the win case. We restricted it in case we had to have a payout so that no one else could ask for the money and it could get spent and it wouldn't be there for the win fund.
So is there any other, what do you call them, unencumbered funds that sit waiting for somebody to spend that we basically aren't listing anywhere?
I would want to go through the chart to see, they have a different name. But I can assure you at the year-end, when they do the audit at financial, they all end up in one...
Yeah, I'm going to get that, get that out and look at that.
One pot.
The reason I'm asking is the Board of Ed, when they came forward, they brought these, brought these funds forward and mentioned them, you know?
And I think...
In their quest to...
And not, yeah, not...
To get more funding, I just wanted to make sure that...
Exactly, because...
You know, is there anything we're missing here?
The total is what's on the audit at financial statements. Now, they could be throughout, you could find different ones when you look at throughout the chart of accounts, but they all have to roll up into that one fund, the undesignedated. But because of this conversation, I will go through and get you a list and we can do a job to try to merge them so that we don't have so many different counts with different account names.
Can we have that by Friday? Would that be too much trouble?
No, no, that's fine. That's no problem.
What's the transparency of the 17,500, Citizens Transparency?
That's exactly what it costs us, the munis. Now, the new transparent site that we have on the web. It, munis is expensive. That's what it costs us a year to run that site. So I do hope people are using it.
That's the portal?
The portal, yes.
Portal.
So will that have that promotional salary online so that the public can see what we're talking about?
Now, transparency usually will show like the actual expenditures.
Yeah, I was just using it as a figure.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, yeah, the expenditures, so...
I understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I guess off that point, is, and I haven't checked, is this information online? All this information? I know there's been, I mean, you know, before I was in office, there'd always be the request for it. Now I get this, so I don't check anymore. How much of this budget information is online, I guess?
Well, every, everything, you mean, what you have before you, that is all online. The whole, if you scroll down, every, the whole book...
Entire budget's online.
Yeah, is online, yeah.
Do you think that site's user-friendly?
No.
And I really would like to take a poll of how many people use it because it is expensive. And there's stuff we can do ourself, like putting these reports. If these are easier to read, we can put the reports on and it's not that cost every year.
Well, maybe if you have time, you could put something together for us.
And we could do, I mean, we run, I mean, munis is powerful. You can pretty much run whatever report you want.
And everybody uses it.
And then we just have one person loaded onto the financial web page.
Since we're asking general budget questions, how much revenue are we getting from Purdue Stadium? I tried to kind of see, you know, the tax revenue or how much is budgeted for next year.
All we get is the rent, Mark. And I think it's 100,000 a year.
That's the, what's kind of the tax revenue, I mean, are, you know, if we get, if they make over... We're supposed to go up, isn't it?
Yeah, we get a little bit more.
But we're not scheduled to do that this coming year?
And John Ellis is a, I will, I'll follow up, have him follow up. That is something he does every year. You do have to have a, to see where we stand and it's a minimum payment and it could go over.
Okay.
I mean, they could pay us more.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't tell them revenues.
Minimum's 100,000, Mark. And I don't recall that we've exceeded that other than in the, in the early years. The majority, actually the majority of the revenue that comes out of Purdue Stadium goes to the state of Maryland in user tax. That all goes to the state.
But we can, I could get you an exact number. And he can do like a history to show you over the last five years what we have received.
I know where you're going with that.
I'm just asking a question, that's all. We had a discussion on the OPEB yesterday. Did you have any, any opinions on that as far as how that was, where that was headed?
I haven't, that's not really my area. I haven't seen any, yeah, anything on...
I didn't know financially you had any input on...
No, I haven't seen anything on that.
Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? We're trying to...
Who's the expert?
We're trying to get an idea of what the line item for salaries promotions is.
Okay, that is vacancy savings. Normally, I'm sorry, that is vacancy savings. They had a retirement of the Chief Revenue Specialist, which we underfilled with a Revenue Specialist position so that vacancy savings went into there. We did not go back and revisit it this year like Wayne and I normally do to cut it. And then it's not in my authority to cut.
So is that delta between who was hired and who they replaced?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And normally we would go back and we would cut all that. You'll also see 2,000 in HR, it's vacancy savings because I had a retirement.
Well...
And I, it's, I put it to the side so it's not mixed up in the general salaries. So it's a good way to track it. And then that way he can see it. Yes, yes. I, on the munis report, I believe on the detail, I detailed that vacancy savings promotional. Because some departments do have promotional. I mean, you have your Rhodes Department, they have, if you get a promotion or you get for CDLs, your correctional officer as they go from CO1 to CO2 to MCL.
Why is it called promotions?
Because if you're, for those departments, if you are going from a correctional officer one to a correctional officer two...
Well, it's in, it's in under promotions in Finance.
Yeah, because that's the account. That's the account available to me. There's no vacancy savings account that's specific for that. We, good recommendation for the future, but...
You're calling it vacancy savings, but you have it as a line item as an expense. Are you saying it's a holding place?
Yes, and that could be...
It's going to be a carry-forward?
Yes.
For future promotions possibly?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. They may or may not occur. Like Michelle said, if you get a CDL license at Rhodes, you qualify for an increase in pay.
Right.
If you go from a correctional officer one to correctional officer two, correctional officer two to MCL or MCL to sergeant, there's a bump in salary. We have to provide for that occurring during the fiscal year.
So if there's a vacancy, I mean, there's numerous departments that have, I say numerous, there are departments that have actual vacancies?
Yes, they're being recruited.
Right, let's say there's a $45,000 job that hasn't been, that is vacant right now.
Yes.
Is that 45,000 now listed under salaries promotions?
No, if it's a vacancy in that job, it's in that vacancy. If the job has not been filled, but you may fill the job or negotiate it with somebody coming in at 43,000 and the prior person may have held it at 45,000.
But it's still in the budget?
Yes.
So it's only if it has been filled, but it's the difference between salaries of the two?
Yeah. It's continuously turnover.
Basically, if it's underfilled. I mean, on vacancies, for instance, we have 10 vacancies right now, corrections. You're, we've got 600 employees. At any given time, you're going to have vacancies for all kinds of reasons.
Right, and if you have vacancies and it's listed as on the charts that we do get where it says vacant and we see where that position is and that vacancy is still funded, I can understand that.
Because we intend to fill that job.
So if you have 10 vacancies and you anticipate that the difference might be $10,000 with the new hires, are you going to say that you're going to have a promotional item listed on here for 100,000 dollars?
Only if it has been filled, right?
Yes, that's correct.
You're not anticipating the filling.
Yes.
Were you, yeah, I'm really confused. So you're saying that this promotions of 11,800, this job has been filled?
Yes.
And that was the leftover salary?
Yes. And it's, it depends on the department, yes. That was an excess salary from the retiree, from the retiree to the new hire. Which happens because they're here for years and we're not going to give them some salary.
Typically, would you take that down to zero? Or would you leave some in there for those bump-ups in rank or in...
We would leave some in there.
CDLs?
You'd leave some in.
You'd leave some in, but some could be technically cut from. Almost every department is going to have some.
I mean, we can have any department where someone may leave who we don't anticipate leaving. It can be a longer-term employee. And when we went out and advertised for that job, we might under, call it...
Sure.
We might underfill that job. In other words, attract a replacement at a lower cost than the person we had. Alternatively, you may have someone who leaves and go out to market and find that you can't attract someone. It gets back to the discussion we just had, Joe, where you can't attract someone for the salary that that person was making, so...
So if you look at almost every department, so at purchasing, there's a salary savings of 6,400 dollars.
Because we filled it.
HR, it's 2,400 dollars. So, I mean, if we could go through and cut half of all of these if we wanted to technically in the budget because you probably don't need that money, but if we don't cut it, it just rolls over to fund balance.
Well, if we don't cut it, then every time that there's a salary discrepancy when we're hiring someone, we're going to come before cancel.
Right.
If you want us to come before you for every single person we hire.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but it sounds to me like the new hires, are you saying that the new hires you're anticipating are all going to be getting paid more? Because I thought from the prior discussion, you just said that the new hire would probably be less.
They will be paid less, but...
Then why would you put a holding place in salaries for 11,800 dollars, which to me seems as if you're anticipating to pay more?
I'm not anticipating to pay more, but I balance out to the actual last year's budget. So account for the money, I'm not anticipating anyone getting anything because they have, in order to get a raise, it has to be within the classification and the rules of our...
Yeah, but that's, there's always a variance there.
How many positions are vacant in the county right now, do you know?
There's probably around 30.
Around 30?
Probably about 30.
Those salaries are already in the budget?
Yes.
So that leaves a savings.
Yes.
So what happens to that savings?
What, then I will do the same thing. I'll put it to the side so that I know it's, will not be spent.
Well, that savings will be a lot more than, what is that, 11,000?
Depends on the position.
Yeah, but we're talking about 30 positions, that's where I'm getting confused.
Depends on the position because a correctional officer right now is budgeted at coming in at a correctional officer one. So that's, they're going to get paid that. A communication operator is budgeted right now in that vacancy as the entry level for Communication Operator One. So when I put in the vacancy, I put in the minimum, or that is what coming in at. So there's not going to be excess savings in those...
And the longer these positions are vacant, the less you have to pay out, so there's more money in the savings.
Well, yeah, well, there could be.
And if the money doesn't get spent, at the end of the... And if the money doesn't get spent at the end of the year, it reverses to the general fund.
Is this a run in average in the county? Are you talking how many employees? Six hundred, eight hundred again?
Six hundred employees.
Six hundred, full time.
Okay.
So about six percent of the workforce.
We've been fully staffed. We've been fully staffed at all departments, but then you get, it's coming near the end of the year. So we're going to get a lot of retirements. So it's, what you see now, it's different today because from when you receive this budget, we've had people retire, people separate.
So.
It's continuous.
So you're, you're saying every year we end up with probably twenty or thirty people in the?
Yeah, oh, yeah, separated from, yes.
Separated, okay.
From, not necessarily retirement, it could be at their own.
Whatever reason, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I was just going to say, I'm kind of confused too because, I mean, I, I appreciate your responsibility as a, as a HR director. But I don't understand why this isn't a matter that the finance director is reviewing. Because I would think as the finance director, the finance director would, would be putting these type of items into the budget and be fully, would fully understand what every aspect of this budget represented. I don't understand why we're going to an HR director to try to evaluate what we're looking at here for the county budget.
Because HR hires, separates, retires.
I fully understand that.
For any of those, for any of those.
But you don't handle budget projections and that's what I'm thinking. I'm going to go by the finance director. And I guess maybe it's a question for you, and I don't understand why the finance director isn't handling the, the budget projections as a whole.
Because we do payroll and payroll is always in.
I understand that, but even if you do payroll, every, every penny that you spend really should be going through the finance. The finance, the catchall for everything when it comes to revenue or when it comes to expenses should be, to me, should be coming through the finance director.
Now, the catchall for the entire budget.
Me, that's.
Excuse me, but I, I would say that, I, I appreciate that, but I would also say, and, and I mean, you were unaware of this as well, Wayne. So I'm trying to understand why.
I wasn't unaware of it.
No, he's not.
I was unaware of how it's processed through Munis. When departments come in to meet with me on their individual department, we go through every single line item. We certainly go through payroll and we determine, are we going to add a position? Do we anticipate that a position is going to go vacant during the year and we're going to fill that position? That, 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 that isn't, you know, that, that, that isn't the finance director's role. The, the, the executive and the director of administration sit with each department head and determine what we are or are not going to put forward in the budget.
Yeah, and I appreciate that too, but I would really think that you would have to, to, to lean on the finance, the head of the finance department in order to put together a final budget for, for the county.
Well, we do.
Well, that's my question. I mean, in this, this particular issue, we have a line item, we have a representation of promotional figures being put in here. And again, I mean, I, it's just, I find a little concern that we, that we're having to ask what I consider to be some rather serious line items being placed in the budget. And it just, it just seems to me confusing that we're going to an HR director instead of a finance director to get the rest.
I guess we work together on these.
Administers our salaries.
And I do understand that.
And, and, and you can't pick a single point in time and say, this is going to be our payroll for the entire year because salary is fluid because of the movement of employees. So we're taking our best, our best estimate of what we believe is going to happen during the year. I can't tell you sitting here today how many vacancies we're going to have in the coming year. How many people may be promoted during the current year, how many people may retire during the year. So what, what, what we're doing is, is that in fact, what we're doing is we're highlighting it as opposed to bearing it inside salaries. So from my standpoint, it, it makes it a more discreet number. It separates that figure so that, and we've done this every year, so.
I'm not, I'm not saying I have a problem with that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is I just, the process of how we got here seems a little bit confusing to me.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with, with what we have put forward in terms of how many positions we're going to have, what those positions are and what we're going to pay those positions. I'm very comfortable with it. What I'm not comfortable with is, because my crystal ball's a little cloudy right now, what's going to happen in the three hundred and sixty-five days starting July one in terms of what sort of personnel movement is going to take place. I, I can only give that my best guess and part of that has to do with, there are certain things that we anticipate that we believe are going to happen. There are certain things that are just based on a run rate. This is what happens on an annual basis. So, so it's our best estimate. I mean, that's as clear as, you know, and, you know, me not being able to explain a single entry in Munis.
It's, well, it's a single entry, but it's a single entry in several departments. It seems to be an across the board policy.
For reasons that I just went through.
I understand. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.